No, rise for the question.
Congratulations to the five United States and to the Republic for pushing sands on the nation under God indivisible, literally, just for all.
Just wanted to make note to everyone that tonight's March 14th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Lower Guanilla is being video recorded. Can we make a note for the meeting that we had an executive session around personnel issues prior to the meeting? Start first with the receipt of the minutes. Has everyone yet having a chance to look at the February 20 minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is a public hearing to consider amendment to zoning code to permit sponsorship signs for Lower Guanilla Little League at township owned fields. I think we voted on February 28th to to make public notice that we are planning to move forward or to that we are considering a zoning code permit to sponsorship signs. I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Torsky.
Thank you. While as Martin and I were walking neighborhoods over the last year or so, we came across many of the Little League families who asked us about putting signs on the outfield wall so they could raise money for projects that they want to do at the Little League. And anecdotally, we had the same problem when my kids were playing Little League many, many years ago. So in working with the Lower Guanilla Little League, we came up with a proposal that might work, that we think works, and it gives them the opportunity to put signs of advertisers in the outfield and allows them to raise money. And I know we have some folks from the Little League tonight, and if you all could just talk and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this and why it's important for you guys.
If you can come up, we have a microphone. Just state your name.
My name is Chris Wilson with the Lower Guanilla Little League. I've met most of you up here at some point in time. And first, just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and for the consideration that you've given the league with regards to putting signs up in the outfield. As many of you know, Lower Guanilla Little League has been around for 60 years, actually over 60 years, I believe it's the 62nd year, serving obviously thousands of kids over the years. And this year will be 306 kids signed up, and we're very excited to have those participants for the 22 season. What goes into this is not just, you know, uniforms and, you know, coaches and pictures. There's a lot of work that goes in on the back end in terms of getting these fields prepared and ready. And it's not just the, you know, sand on the infield. It's $3,000 for electrical box that needs to go in. It's another $3,000 to patch the roof up. It's buying catcher's equipment. It's it's there's a lot of expenses that go into this. And we've been successful in raising some money over the years utilizing, you know, backs of uniforms and whatnot. But we really felt that we were missing an opportunity to expand those fundraising efforts, especially as our projects look to be much larger going forward with the possibility of bathrooms maybe going in or redoing the fields to address significant drainage issues. And it's not just one field. It's, you know, six fields. So by our hope is, is that by allowing us to put fields in the outfield or signs in the outfield, rather, that we will be able to raise substantially much more money to address these projects and to make sure that those fields that are not just, you know, there for the Little League to play on, but also kind of like a landmark to this community. I think I whenever I give directions to get to my house, I would say you'll drive up and you'll see the Little League fields on the right hand side. It's nice to keep those looking nice. And that's our goal. Our goal is not to, you know, yuck anything up. You know, we want to make sure that the rest of it, that the fields stay nice looking, respectful to the community at large, but while also allowing us to raise money to keep them the way they are for hopefully another 60 years. So again, I just want to say thank you again for the consideration of this and hopefully it all goes smoothly.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from supervisors? I just had a comment. Jamie, can you scroll down to the section that requires that six right there, directed to maintain solely both by Little League in good tape in good condition. Any sign that is not in good condition shall be immediately removed. I would prefer the section define in who determines what is not in good condition. And I'd like that to be Lower Guanilla Township in its sole discretion to find said a sign is not in good condition, it shall be removed.
Just specifically, you're indicating that you want to change it to that if the township finds any signs to be in good condition.
Yeah, I think someone needs to determine what's in good condition. And I think the township should determine that. Is that explicitly indicated in that in number six, Mr. Stone?
It is. This is an amendment to the zoning code, and it is the township that makes determinations under the zoning code. So while I understand the comment, I don't think it's absolutely necessary because this is an amendment to the zoning code.
And it is Lower Guanilla zoning code.
And it is the Lower Guanilla zoning code.
So there would be no other person who could.
And I think the Little League probably understands that the township is going to make that determination.
Our intention of all this is obviously working in and mentioned standing to make sure that everything's on a very, you know, those standards.
That's fine, as long as we have the sole discretion. I'm happy with that. Thank you. Any other questions for the supervisors?
I just also want to state for the record, this was reviewed by the Township Planning Commission and recommended for approval. It was reviewed by Montgomery County Planning Commission and recommended for approval, and it was properly advertised in accordance with Article Six of the municipality's planning code. So it's ready for your consideration.
As well as the Park and Run.
Yes, Park and Run. Sorry.
Yes. And I'll just add, I had two family members that played baseball years ago. Their father was the minor league commissioner. You guys provide a great amenity to this township, and we really, really appreciate that. And we want to do whatever we can to make you successful. So look forward to the continued relationship and play ball. Is there any other comments from supervisors? Any comments from the public? Any online?
Yeah.
So we have before us the consideration to the amendment to our zoning code to permit sponsorship signs for Lower Guanilla Little League at township owned fields. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
No second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Another question. How are you planning on soliciting sponsorships?
I already got a solicitation.
Yeah, it's been a real positive feedback. I spent last week on sort of Florida, Bethlehem, quite a bunch of places. They were very keen on having that. It was a great response. I mean, we got a uniform team right now. People are very excited to study to include you.
That's great.
Well, definitely, you can count my firm in. I mean, as long as we can get a leg up on Neil's firm.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to connect you with. I'm sorry?
I was just gonna say, the other thing with now is, just from having discussions with a lot of folks around networks who have businesses and friends who have businesses, this community wants to give back. We're fortunate to live in a great community. These businesses are wanting to give back. So all the things are asking, and by the way, I don't have any great students, which is a great small first pay to have that recognition.
Wow. That's great. Awesome.
Yeah.
So you've probably tapped into a few of the members of the Lower Guanilla Business Association, but I'd be happy to connect you with the leadership there. They could probably spin out a mass email for you.
Well, this is really good. It's been a long time coming. I'm glad we could get this done for you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. It's daylight savings time, but I bet you guys have a bad time.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Next up, we have consideration for waiver of the land development for hearth builders at 812 North Bethlehem Pike. Good evening. I just need you to use the microphones so they can hear you online.
How's that? Oh, I think we've got it.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tim Woodrow, civil engineer representing Greg Harth tonight, who is with me. I hope I'm bringing some good news this evening. We're here on behalf of the property located at 812 North Bethlehem Pike, the old Axe Office Building, that has been abandoned for for quite some time, or at least not in use for quite some time. And we think we found a great repurposing of the structure for hearth construction. The proposal tonight is not hugely significant. We've got a couple of small building additions out front to help with the facade. We're adding a couple of parking spaces. But maybe to help better illustrate exactly what it is we like to achieve, there is another PDF, Jamie, that was prepared by our architects, Lewis and Associates. Obviously, the first image is the existing structure as you see it driving down Bethlehem Pike these days. I think the next image is what we'd like to do to that building. Obviously, a great deal of investment into the facade and upgrade to the amenities in and around, some outdoor spaces, some canopy, you know, again, some more welcoming of the pedestrian traffic from Bethlehem Pike to the building. And so this is kind of a first phase. I think there are some other goals we have for the property. So we'll be back to see you for sure with the land development application. But for tonight, we're hoping to get started on some of these improvements. Mr. Harth is currently located in the bank building on that section between Pennland Blue Bell and Bethlehem, and like to be able to get in here before a lease expires next fall, which is a good thing. This plan has been submitted and approved or recommended for approval by the planning commission. We do have review letters from Mr. Comley, from Gilmore Associates, from Chad. None of those topics are of a significant concern. So we're happy to will comply to any of those comments that that might be left in those review letters. Obviously, we've got some stormwater management that we're committed to implementing as well as to monitor closely those trees that are coming down. And we are certainly more than willing to either replace or pay a fee in lieu of for those trees that we cannot replace on site at the ratio that we typically use in what we're going in for caliber inch replacement. I think Mr. Science Office had prepared a draft version of a resolution that might waive that that land development process for this initial project. Our client, my client or our attorney and I have reviewed that proposed resolution. I think everything is fine. We're certainly willing to accept any condition that was suggested or enumerated in that resolution. So barring any questions that we have for you guys this evening.
I think the main question that I had, and it was related to the trees. So you're either going to try to replace or pay the fee in lieu.
Correct.
Okay.
And that'll sort of happen in phase two, or when you come back?
Yes, Michael, we will. And obviously, you know, if with a little bit more expansion of parking and impervious surface, we have a much higher threshold of obligation to present you with information and design, and certainly willing to do that. And we'll be back with those plans at the appropriate time.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm following up on Danielle's questions about the trees. So I really appreciate the investment into this building, and I think it's going to be lovely and a great addition to the to the business district there. I'm excited to see it completed. But I didn't see a definition of the number of trees is going to decide that.
Yeah. Test today, if I can direct your attention to the drafted and rendered exhibit up on the on the screen, we're adding some parking spaces as you pull into the site from Bethlehem Pike to the right hand side. There are four or five trees right in that location. In fact, we have a survey plan that was submitted along with the application that shows those trees and their location. So there's about about six, seven trees that that are kind of in harm's way. There's a couple more that we think we can save. And so I think what we'd like to do is defer to your catch-up engineer, and he would be the arbiter, if you will, of what trees can stay and what trees need to come down. And then obviously, he would keep an accounting of the caliber inches that were lost.
I think that's already been determined, hasn't it?
This is Chad. So Chad's a traffic dude. He isn't about trees.
Sorry. The person that sits the sun.
Yeah, exactly. But I did speak to Jim Hurst today, and I think Jim and I have actually had a little bit of a conversation. And I think what we were talking about is about 80 caliber inches that look to be in jeopardy. And so that would be like 27 trees. But, you know, so at $300 for tree times 27 would render a number. But again, I think we're asking to maybe just hold on that a little bit, just in case we can save another tree or two. We'd like that kind of flexibility in the resolution.
Okay.
On the supervisor, all the same laws on the property attempt to save. We don't tend to take anything along with that one. That quarter, these are all pretty small scraggly trees.
These are all pretty small, small scraggly trees on the side, specifically where that parking goes. And there's two landscapes trees in the very front where the addition goes.
Okay, yeah, I think right now as it stands, and I haven't walked the property, but just driving by, it has a pleasant, you know, park-like look to it. And I would like to see that maintained.
Absolutely. And I think too, one of the things that we hope to achieve with some of these improvements for the building, today, I get the sense when I drive by that that building is removed from Bethlehem Pike. It's not part of the streetscape. And I think a lot of the improvements that Mr. Harth is proposing is trying to try to draw that building and try and draw that pedestrian experience closer to the pike. And so I think that some landscaping can help do that, and certainly trying to preserve those existing street trees will be important to that goal.
Great.
Are there any other questions from supervisors? No questions. I know you're ready, Catherine. Any questions first? Any questions from the public? Is there a motion to? Catherine, you want to take it up?
Yeah, I'm making motions to waive land development for hearth builders at 812 North Bethlehem Pike.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We'll see you soon.
See you soon. If I could just make a comment, I did want to make a comment before the vote was taken. What I'm about to say is congratulations on your acquisition. You've been a longstanding friend of Lower Guanilla Township. I'm just thrilled that this building became available because I know you're busting at the seams where you are, and I really appreciate your commitment to staying in Lower Guanilla Township.
There's a lot of space available outside of the township. There wasn't much space available within the township. It was really important to maintain the root here and fully start supporting the payroll taxes.
I just wanted to comment, it's a beautiful building.
Beautiful.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the aesthetic that you're bringing to the Bethlehem Pike. So thank you.
I'm not sure I appreciate the project.
You're getting in early.
Now you know how I feel.
You know, you can save money on the engineering fees. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So moving on to other business, I think it's still on our agenda, but Mr. Blair from Wherever Realty Advisors is unable to attend. He was under the weather, so we will reschedule presentation from him. Next up is the proposal from McMahon on the traffic study at Whistler and Pennland Blue Bell Pike. I think that's Chad.
Well, as requested, based on some discussions at a couple of recent board meetings, we prepared a proposal for consideration by the board to do an evaluation of the intersection of Pennland Pike and Worcester Avenue to hopefully address and come up with some potential solutions to improve the operations at the intersection based on, you know, concerns over safety in that area, particularly with with ballpark there is even more of concern. So the proposal that we've prepared for the township, we sort of broke it up into three parts. The one would go through and do an evaluation of potentially making the intersection and always stop control intersection and the scope of that evaluation, as we've discussed with similar projects, is based on the requirements in the Pennsylvania Code and industry standard of manual and uniform traffic control devices. So that's the standard scope that we would follow for a multiway or always stop evaluation. The next two parts go a little bit beyond that. Part two is where we would do a big picture evaluation of some short term, low cost, what we're called safety enhancements that could be implemented by the township. Things like additional pavement marking, signing, look at the potential if if it we find that it may be a good idea, any kind of flashing warning device for the intersection. And we provide a sketch for that to show what those potential enhancements would look like. The third part, task three, is a longer term evaluation. Again, just a big picture look at what more significant improvements may be required. And the reason we put this task in the scope is, is that when we look at the evaluation for the multiway stop and the short term safety enhancements, if we find that certain traffic flow changes are needed for the intersection, they may require the evaluation of the Pennland Pike and Old Pennland Pike intersection, which, as you're all aware, has a very sharp, sharp angle intersection, which makes it difficult to make turns there. And if we divert traffic to that intersection, the township may want to consider some longer term, more expensive improvements to that intersection. So again, you know, test two and test three are just big picture evaluations, not getting into any detailed, you know, engineering at that point, just sort of a an evaluation to give you some thoughts on, you know, things to potentially evaluate further. So with that, take any questions you have.
So I see that the you're going to conduct the turning movement counts on typical weekdays from seven to six. And I'm not saying that you're the traffic guy. I'm definitely not the traffic. I cause the traffic. But given that the use of that area is all field, is there, does that skew post six o'clock traffic counts sort of, does it skew because of weekend? Or does it, once you get those times and during the week, that's an indication of what you're going to get any as bad as it'll be any other time?
No, that's a good question. Typically, what we find is that once you go further into the evening past six o'clock, the normal commuter traffic starts to fall off at a pace where it's not significant enough to drive any types of warrants for like a multiway stop or any other traffic control. The way we do traffic counts though nowadays, and the machines that we use, we'll put it out there and it'll collect data from the time it starts until the time it stops. So we can always go back and pull additional data once we do the counts. We don't do it the old way anymore where we send somebody out there with a count board and push a button. So we only have them out there for a certain period of time. So we definitely want to be cognizant of the special events and, you know, the traffic flows and patterns that are associated with that. And we'll have all the data available for us if we need to go back and pull some additional things. It'll be right at our fingertips.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
How long typically do you think that this entirety for for all three tasks, how long would it take?
The initial task one, we're anticipating would take us about four weeks. We would present those results at that time to the board. And then before we move on to tasks two and three, task two and three, each should probably take, you know, two to four weeks to complete. Nothing, nothing very long.
So we should probably have a firm understanding if we were to start today by June, end of May?
Oh, definitely. Yeah.
Is there any other questions?
It's, I'm sorry, it's conceivable that after you've done your study and do the analysis, the answer is we don't change any.
Sure. Definitely. That's always, it's always a possibility.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? So the total that for the entirety of the project, including all three tests is $8,900?
Correct.
And if we were to authorize it today, you could begin immediately?
Yes.
Is there anything prohibiting you from beginning immediately?
No, if we're authorized this evening, we'll get a traffic count scheduled, which normally we can get those done within a week or 10, and we'll start our analysis right after that.
Well, I think all the questions I have, is anybody else, are there any other questions to the board? Any questions from the public? Yes or no? Okay. So we have before is consideration of McMahon's traffic study with Sturm Pennland Blue Bell Pike. Is there a motion?
I'm making motion to accept McMahon's proposal for the traffic study at Sturm Pennland and the amount of $8,900.
There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't hear you, Jamie. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you so much, Chad. I appreciate it.
I'm not sure when spring break starts for Wissaken, but that'll be a huge part of the count.
Oh, yeah, 12, no, 11 this week.
11.
11 to the.
About two weeks when it's going to start.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Next up is authorization to readvertise Lower Guanilla's proposed term limit for supervisors. We authorized this, I believe, February 14th. In that authorization, we indicated that we would vote on the 28th, and we didn't specify last month on the 28th that we would not, we didn't specify the date that we would vote moving forward. So because of that, we have to go back and reauthorize. It's the same concerns, the same issues. It's related to good governance. Is there any questions by the board?
I don't have a question. I just had a comment that I don't believe that it is my opinion that we don't have the authority to impose supervisor term limits in Lower Guanilla Township because it is not a delineated power in the second class township code, which governs our duties and powers and responsibilities, et cetera. And it is my opinion that it would take an act of the state legislature to impose term limits on supervisors in the second class township, which we are. The case that the ordinance cites as authority for doing so isn't on point as it was an interpretation of the third class city charter law, again, which is not what governs the business of Lower Guanilla Township. So that's my comment. Obviously, it's going to lead to a certain vote, but there you have
it. Appreciate that. Is there any other comments?
I just said, I have a question. And I saw the email and it, do you, are you aware of any site, are you aware of any case sites that would prohibit this? Because I understand, I understand your point. I mean, my only point is I'm, as you know, at least the two on this end are also lawyers. So but I don't know anything about municipal law, truthfully. And that's why, you know, we relied on Neil. So I'm trying to figure out in order to make an informed decision. I mean, I saw Neil's analysis, obviously.
I missed that. I sent the email out this morning, and I didn't.
Okay, thank you. So he emailed a memo, a memo. Yeah, he emailed a memo of the analysis of the proposed term limits.
So I don't, I just don't have the experience. I mean, I mean, it sounds like, and I, you know, based on your email and this discussion, that you have more experience. I mean, I have no experience in municipal law, and it sounds like you do. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, not as a practicing attorney, but certainly just as a.
Well, not as a practicing attorney, but certainly just as a, um, you know, supervisor. I don't know if there's any case law. I'm sure there's more case law out there. I, I don't know, Mike. But just based on what's before me right now, it doesn't seem like there's justification to, uh, legal justification giving us the authority to impose term limits.
I'm just going to say I'm not a lawyer. Just, just for the record, um, but I did read, um, and it sounds like the enabling language for the second-class township, uh, doesn't specify that we cannot. And because of that, the enabler language specifies a whole bunch of duties through which that we can act, one of which, one of which includes good governance. So without that specification and with the idea that this, in my opinion, falls under good governance. Um, and we are not the only second-class townships who have considered this. It, it seems to align with the powers that the legislature has given to us. But again, I, I, one of the few, we're in the minority as the non-lawyer on the dais.
So did you say there's other second-class townships that have?
Yeah. Yes, one.
I was just a New Garden Township in Chester County the day after. It's a second-class township.
Well, I might argue that they didn't have the authority to do it either.
They already said the same thing because we're not prohibited by the legislature from doing this. That's why we're doing it.
Well, I think as statutory construction, and believe me, I'm no pro at it, um, if it's silent, doesn't necessarily mean it condones it, especially in light of the matter that they defined the term, the year, the six-year term, but they didn't go further to, you know, define any kind of limitations on terms or vest that authority in the municipal body.
I read Neil's memo differently, but I defer, along with Mike, I defer to Neil's analysis, but.
And I'm sorry, I can't speak to this right now.
Yeah, I would take a look at that because it might, I mean, because you asked for additional case law, like there's a variety of cases that he cites. Nothing specifically on point either way, but I think it hasn't been challenged, these other second-class townships that have done it. It hasn't gone up, you know, through the court system.
Because there, I, the reason for that is most likely because no one has had standing yet to challenge it.
How long has the New Garden Township term limit provision been in?
It's been there for a while. Not sure the exact time, but it's.
More than a cycle.
More than one election cycle?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Did you make reference to that township?
I did it by email that the memo was attached to.
Oh, okay.
Neil, so in light of, uh, Kathleen's question, um, what would be a downside if we adopt this and someone in the township who has standing decides to, um, fight it or?
Think you have a decision to make. Do you want to litigate it or do you want to withdraw it from consideration?
Okay.
So Neil, just in your opinion, again, as a non-lawyer, um, my interpretation was the only.
I'm not a lawyer either.
The only person who would have standing, is it anyone in the township have standing, or is it just someone who is seeking, um, the position?
That hasn't been decided. I.
So that's by the courts. Okay.
See, the best stand, the best standing would be a sitting supervisor.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't run again.
Somebody, exactly.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and let me make note. I interpreted that first section doesn't, this isn't personal to me. I can run again if I want.
Yes.
And I'm agnostic on the whole idea of term limits. I'm just questioning our authority to be able to do so.
Yeah, so maybe by way of background, um, I don't know if it'll be helpful, but I, I will say this, that, um, in it, again, this goes back to when Jeanne and, uh, Janine and I were campaigning. You sort of start out, we were both new to this. I've never run for anything in my life. And you start out with some ideas of what you might want to run on and what you might want to do if you actually win. And what happened is we knocked on hundreds of doors. I mean, as you all know, and we met a lot of people and whatever we thought initially was what we stood for or what we were going to run on, what we wanted to do is it was changed by what people wanted, what people told us. So a lot of people told us that they wanted to see changes to Bethlehem Pike. There were too many vacancies. So, yeah, that made sense. And a lot of people asked us about term limits. It wasn't something that we went out talking about or thinking about. It just, people approached us. How come? How, how come the, how come people serve for twenty and thirty years? And it doesn't seem right. It prevents other people from serving. And that seemed reasonable to me. And I know Janine and I talked before we, you know, while we were running and before we took office, that that seemed like a reasonable concern that people have. So when we brought it up here and the, the, the ordinance is patterned after the twenty-second amendment, it gives people twelve years to serve. And I understand your concern. It doesn't matter whether it's good government or not. It only matters whether it's permissible or not. And, um, you know, I, I sort of said this to Janine earlier, there's a lot of dermatologists and brain surgeons are both doctors, but I wouldn't want one of them operating on my brain. And, um, I kind of feel that way about my own opinion on whether this is permissible or constitutional. We have a solicitor. We retained him for exactly this, and, um, I'm going to, I'm, me personally, I'm going to rely on our solicitor. I've read his memo. If there was any case law to the contrary, obviously I would have to consider that, but, um, without any case law to the contrary, again, I, I've read Neil's memo and that seemed a reasonable interpretation to me. Might it be wrong? Sure. I mean, it's, anything's possible. That's why we have courts. A lot of people in this town talk to us about it, and I would feel not particularly good if we didn't try to at least do some of the things that they asked us when we were walking around the neighborhoods.
And it's not something I think that they, they spoke it to me and Tessie when we were walking years before, um, at least me personally. A lot of people were saying that it, the fact that there is no limitation, it prevents people from even considering running. It's a lot of work to run. It's a lot of work, especially if you know that you have to fight somebody who's trying to hold on to a seat. So the understanding that, you know, you give it twelve years, which is, in my opinion, an obscenely long period of time. And then there's the opportunity for others to step in, um, and, and volunteer the same way that we did. So I, I couldn't also be silent on the issue, knowing that years prior, um, it was brought to me, you know, again, brought to you guys. So that's why we're pursuing it. That's why I'm pursuing it personally.
You know, I, um, I don't disagree with term limits. I think it's, it makes for good government, but I think that's a cop-out saying it make room for somebody else to run. If you want to run for office, if somebody's in office and you don't want them to be there, then you run against them. I, I think that's just a real cop-out. But, um, I'm not opposed to term limits per se. Uh, I just think we need to approach it, uh, for the, I guess, the right reasons. It's, it's not like we're making money, uh, so there's no.
I think there might be some confusion that we do make some money. I don't know. But I mean, this is only saying you sit out one cycle. So if you really are passionate about local government and, and you want to serve your township after twelve years, you're sitting out one election cycle and then you can go again.
Well, that's another objection that I have because it adds another requirement to an individual's eligibility to run. If you had been a prior supervisor, you have to wait. So it's adding a requirement other than domicile and age. I think those are the only two, um, requirements at this point, and that's not our prerogative to add a requirement in the second-class township code. It is the state legislature's prerogative to do so.
No, I, I understand your objection. Is there any other questions from supervisors? Is there any questions from anyone online? So what we have before us is this is just the authorization to re-advertise, um, to make the public aware that we would consider, um, proposed ordinance for supervisor term limits. Is there a motion?
Move to re-advertise and hopefully we can continue the discussion and maybe somebody will come up with some case law that helps us one way or the other. I mean, I just, again, I don't know, um.
Yeah, I can say too, I had this conversation with the general counsel at P-Sats. He didn't know anything either, so.
Okay. I'll second the motion to re-advertise.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Re-advertising Lower Gwinnett's proposed term limit ordinance. Next on our agenda is public, well, it says public comments. But did I miss our committee?
No, not yet.
It's not on there. It's not on there. Okay. You missed it. It's okay. So public comments, any comments from anyone in the public from anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. That was quick. Manager's report.
I have none.
Newsletters and mail-ups. Is there any update from any of our supervisor liaisons to our committees?
I think, um, we have a couple of updates from the EAC.
Okay.
So, uh, the EAC is getting ready for, uh, Earth Month, uh, not just Earth Day, Earth Month in April. And there's going to be a number of activities sponsored by the, um, Township EAC, including a, a couple of bird walks, uh, and these will be posted on the calendar, uh, for the public. And a really interesting one that you should mark your calendar for, uh, they have invited a representative from Republic Services to give a presentation on, uh, recycling. So get more information on what can be recycled, where does our recycled material go? And, um, you know, is it just going into the landfill or is it really being recycled? So I think that'll be very, uh, informative. And then another activity is if you've noticed, there's a, uh, like a wind tunnel on the three oh nine ramps off of Norristown and a lot of, uh, trash and debris gets caught there. So, uh, they've organized a, a ramp cleanup and that's going to happen April ninth. And, um, there are more activities in the planning stage, which I, I won't announce yet, but, um, it, it sounds like a really, uh, exciting, uh, month for the EAC. The Energy Committee, which is a subcommittee of the EAC, uh, is working on a demo project and it, it seems like that's about worked out. It's going to involve a demonstration of, a practical demonstration of solar energy. So, uh, that'll come out, uh, pretty soon. Kathleen, you want to say something about the EMS meetings that we've had?
Sure. Uh, so Tessie and I are on the Emergency Medical Services Subcommittee. I know Janine and Mike went out to visit with Frank Baxter, our emergency management.
I think it's just the emergency manager.
Emergency manager. Um, Tessie and I did somewhat of a repeat on that this past week and, uh, talked a little bit about the North Penn Fire Company as well. And we also met with representatives from the, uh, Wisconsin Fire Company. So we're gathering our information, posturing ourselves. Uh, we'll probably have our first real EMS Subcommittee meeting in the second quarter. So April or May maybe. So all's good on our front.
Sounds good. Awesome. And is that it? Was there parking work?
We meet tomorrow.
We meet tomorrow. Okay.
But we had our tour.
We did.
Did have the tour. So this, you had your tour of all of our parks with, um.
With, yeah, with our engineers, um, and they're working on a, a proposal for us now to kind of pri- help us prioritize how to, um, you know, revitalize some of our, some of our parks. Um, so we're really excited. I think it went very well and there are a wealth of knowledge and information and I'm excited to see what they put together for us.
Yeah, Jen was accompanied by another, uh, employee who was like so knowledgeable on, uh, playgrounds and trails and sports and activities and whatnot. Um, I, yeah, I don't know what her exact title was, but she was perfect for the task.
Yep. Yeah, it's exciting stuff. There's so many new cool things out there and make things inclusive and accessible to everybody and. So the plan is to, um, that we'll have a, um, strategy put forward for how to update the parks? It won't be a full strategic plan, but, but it'll, it'll be the first step in sort of helping us prioritize this very high-level, um, view. And, and hopefully the goal is hopefully we can prioritize and in time for maybe the close of some of these grant applications that are coming to a head in the spring.
Sounds awesome. Yeah, thank you. Um, and so the Historic Committee, the Bethlehem Pike Revitalization Committee and, um, is, I guess it's the Amulets Association Liaison. Those volunteers who have applied, we've received those applications. We're in the process of reviewing them and we should have something, um, within the next month, um, to, to discuss on the board level. Um, supervisor comments. Tessie? I did, there was one. Yeah.
I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Okay, Kathleen? You what? You said there was nothing?
I'm sorry.
Were you asleep for a minute?
I don't have anything either.
Janine?
Nope. Thanks, everybody.
Mike?
No, no, thank you very much.
All right, I'm good as well. Um, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Right, any kind of rec, yeah, sure.
No, it's seven fifty-eight.
Getting over.
And we didn't start for ten minutes.